Will you say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it. We have no communications tonight. So now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of the Goodyear City Council. Do we have any cards?
No.
All right, thank you very much. Let's go on to the consent agenda. Would the city clerk please read consent agenda items? Six point one to six point six, and then six point eight, because one has been pulled off, six point seven.
Six point one, approval of minutes. Six point two, authorize the intergovernmental agreement for basic animal control services between Maricopa County and the city of Goodyear. Six point three, authorize expenditures of funds in excess of $500,000 for routine annual expenses, including utilities, fuel, insurances, landscape maintenance, trash collection, and debt service for fiscal year 2019. Six point four, authorize the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Phoenix for participation in the Arizona Internet Crimes Against Children, ICAC, task force. Six point five, authorize the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Glendale for police officers to work off-duty security at the University of Phoenix Stadium. Six point six, authorize the intergovernmental agreement for Maricopa County Sheriff's Office to provide law enforcement services to the Sonoran Valley area. Six point seven was pulled administratively, and six point eight, approve the fiscal year 2018 budget transfers.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody know I'd just like to speak? Does anyone in the public, does any council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? No? All right. So let's go. Could I have a motion, please, and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Pizzillo, and a second by Councilman Hampton. Roll call vote, please.
Laura Tonno?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, we're going on to the business, and I would like to remind council, we'll be praying from asking questions until the staff presentations are complete and there is a motion on the table. So we'll do a start out with seven point one, is a, is a public hearing to consider the rezone of approximately 22 acres to the Christopher Todd Communities at Canyon Trails pad. Open public hearing. Alex Lotinsky, Planner Two, presenting. Alex?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The subject property is located at the southwest corner of Van Buren and the 303. It's just east of the Canyon Trails, Unit 4 West neighborhood. It's currently zoned PAD within that Canyon Trails PAD. A portion of the site is zoned for commercial. That's that red area, and then the lighter red area just to the south is zoned for court home products. The request tonight is to pull the property out of the Canyon Trails PAD and create a singular PAD that would allow for a single-story multifamily residential for Christopher Todd Communities project. In 2017, the council approved a request for an amendment to the Estrella Commons PAD at the northwest corner of Van Buren and Estrella Parkway, which included nearly identical development standards to the proposal before you tonight. These development standards are included in the Christopher Todd Communities at Canyon Trails PAD. The bolded items are development standards that are deviated from the city's MF-18 district. Some notable items require a maximum height of one story. This limits residential buildings as 16 feet, and accessory buildings to 20 feet, and those accessory buildings include the office and fitness center. The outer boundaries of the property are made up of the backyards of the units, so those setbacks are, or those setbacks contain the backyards of the units. Along 173rd Avenue and Van Buren, the applicant worked with staff to provide additional landscaping to enhance the streetscape, as well as remain consistent with the adjacent roadway. This is an image of the conceptual landscaping plan. One thing to note is that the rezone does not approve a site plan. It just creates regulations on the property, so if Christopher Todd no longer wanted to develop, the standards on the last page would still apply to any future development. The conceptual site plan includes 261 units, both one and two-bedroom. The main entry is off 173rd Avenue. There is an exit only onto Van Buren Street. A traffic study was reviewed by the city's staff and approved. The study anticipated a decrease in trips generated compared to a commercial use. A traffic signal at the intersection of 173rd and Van Buren is also anticipated. The developer is required to pay a proportionate share, and that signal will be built when warranted. Amenities include a pool, a fitness center, along with a smaller, smaller parks throughout the site. These are images of the conceptual elevations for the project. On the left are the one-bedroom units, and these come in two packs. On the right are two-bedroom units, and they're single units. On February 28th, the city hosted a neighborhood meeting for the applicant to receive public input. About five residents attended this meeting. The residents were from the adjacent Canyon Trails neighborhood. They appeared to be in favor of the rezone from the commercial, from commercial to single-story multifamily residential. They had expressed concerns related to their neighborhood specifically, but not related to the request before you tonight. Based on the city's requirements for zoning and engineering standards, the applicant has demonstrated compliance. Therefore, staff is recommending approval. A public hearing was held on June 13th before the Planning and Zoning Commission. No one from the public spoke in opposition of this proposal, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously to the item. This concludes my presentation. The applicant is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the applicant want to speak at this time, or?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Paul Gilbert, 701 North, 44th Street. Alex did a magnificent job. Now, I could regale you with a lot more detail, but frankly, maybe I'm being naive, but I don't think it's necessary. We have staff support. We're in agreement with all the stipulations. We had a great neighborhood meeting, and the concern, they had dealt more with issues that weren't related to our project, as Alex trenchantly pointed out to you. So unless you'd like to hear from me in glorious detail, I think I've given you all that I feel is necessary, although I'm happy, because I'm paid by the word, to continue on if you would like a larger presentation.
I thank you very much, and if council has a question, we'll call you back up.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Paul. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Does any one audience want to speak? Then I'm going to close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read Resolution Number 2018-1876 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1876 declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the city clerk entitled supplementary zoning map 18-01A, City of Goodyear, Arizona rezone case, pad final to pad final 18-210-00001 dated May 2018. Christopher Todd Communities at Canyon Trails Legal Description - Pad Rezoning and Christopher Todd Communities at Canyon Trails Pad dated April 18th, 2018.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Laura Tonno, and a second from Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion. Councilman Stip.
Ironically, I had just driven by this area like the day before we got the agenda. And I said, oh, what's going on in this piece of property right here? This seems to be the perfect fit for what has now been created by the 303 and the, and as it comes down through Van Buren, et cetera. So I know this typically isn't the type of development for a density that we normally like to see, but it's a really good fit for that piece of property, and I'm thankful that, that they're there to fill it up. So to our attorney representing the Todd Communities, thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, Councilman Laura Tonno.
I'm going to echo, echo Councilmember Stip's comments. I really like it. I think it's a unique layout of properties and sizes that we don't really have a lot in our inventory here in the city, so I think it'll be very good. My only question, I'm sure it will be in the stipulations when you rent these, are the ones that are going to border the 303, this might be the question for the applicant. Looks like there's a buffer at least 20 feet there, so I think there's, I just want to make sure there's a good enough buffer, or that people are going to be notified that that's the 303, so we don't get the noise complaints later on.
Would you like to address that, or staff?
Well, thank you for letting me share the podium again. To answer your question, we have a 33-foot backyard there, and there's also a wall, so I think we've got it covered.
Perfect, and it's a good-looking development, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that reassurance. Any other questions? Yes, Brenner?
Yeah, I had a lot of different questions on this project, but I think most of them have been answered. Thank you to the staff for that. So I just want to clarify, so the exit on Van Buren Street, that is only, only an exit, or it's also an entrance, right-hand turn? I got some mixed information, so I was curious.
The access point on Van Buren is an exit only.
Okay.
There's a median there, and in fact, I don't want to regale you with more information than you asked, but the reason this property hasn't developed as commercial is because there's no access to the 303.
Yeah.
And then there's also no access from Van Buren turning in. So this parcel was left high and dry, so to speak, and this is, we think, of very good use, as the councilman indicated earlier.
Yeah. No, I think it's a good use as well. I think it'll be a good addition to that, that part of the community, and like, like the other councilwoman said here, that we don't have that much stock in our inventory like this, so it's definitely a niche that we don't have in the community, so I think it'll be, be welcomed, and it'll be, it'll be used. So I think it looks good, and, and I hope that we, the tentative or the conceptual, conceptual pictures, I think it, that would be good if that ended up, ended up looking like it, like it did, so, like it will in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think, any other questions before we ask? You can take a seat now. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I tried twice before.
I know you did. I, I, there's.
No promises.
They just want, they just like having you come up and talk to them.
Well, I'm fine, thanks.
Yes, yes. So I, it's really nice that Christopher Todd Communities is building this, and I agree with what you said. It's a perfect spot for it, and it's going to help that area grow. It's convenient for them there, the roads are convenient, so let's do a roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tonno?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
So the second part of that, would the city clerk please read ordinance Number 2018-1389 by title only?
Adopt ordinance Number 2018-1389, rezoning approximately 22 acres of land located at the southeast corner of 173rd Avenue and Van Buren Street, from final planned area development pad, mixed uses to final planned area development pad, the Christopher Todd Communities at Canyon Trails pad. Amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Stip, and a second by Councilman Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. No discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tonno?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Well, let's go on to the next public hearing, seven point two, to consider an amendment to the PV 303 Planned Area Development. Open public hearing. Steve Garashia, Planner Three, presenting.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. PAD amendment for the PV 303, and this image shows the overall planned area development. Initially started 2005, rezoned in 2007, been amended several times since then. But basically, this PAD, we run from Camelback all the way down to the Thomas Road alignment, from Citrus Road on the west to about Falcon 157, second here on the east. As you can see, this PAD is predominantly industrial land uses. That's because of Luke Air Force Base here to the north. You can see the noise contour lines run right through the PAD. We have the accident potential zones here also through a portion of the PAD. And tonight's action is for west three of the Palm Valley 303, and that's this section here, north of Thomas, south of Indian School, between Citrus and Cotton. And this is an aerial photo of that section, Indian School, Thomas, Cotton, and Citrus 303, right here, farmland right now. The amendment will cover the south half of the section, about 310 acres, and that 310 acres will be subject to, this is a two-part request. The first part will be a height increase from 75 feet to 130 feet for buildings and support equipment, and that will be for the entire 310 acres. And then there's also a rezone component of this PAD amendment, and that will be for an 11-acre commercial piece, and I'll go back here. That's right here, down by that Thomas Road as it comes into Cotton Lane, 11 acres right here, this rectangle. And surrounding this piece is pretty much industrial on the general plan. We have the state prison complex here. We have more industrial to the north, to the east, and this here in the northwest corner is the Sudea Community. Right here is the commercial parcel, and then it transitions to residential development. And this, should the application be approved, will be the outcome. You will have a west 3A and a west 3B. The west 3B only will have the height increase up to 130 feet, and you'll see here that this is now all industrial north of the Thomas Road. And the applicant looked for areas where they could have additional height for users. They're getting inquiries from users for support equipment, things such as silos or tanks to go higher than the 75 feet. Staff worked with the applicant. We worked with Luke Air Force Base. This piece right here is the furthest from Luke. It's the furthest from the residential to the north. We have this barrier of the 303 between Pebble Creek and this development. This parcel here, this 310 acres, was deemed the most appropriate for users that needed additional height. And again, staff contacted Luke Air Force Base, met with them. They formally responded that the increase in height does not negatively affect their airport operations. We also did provide notice, because this is a public hearing, we followed all of our notice procedures. We did reach out to surrounding property owners, including the state. We did not receive any negative inquiries or opposition to this project. Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item at their meeting of June 5th, June 13th. They did vote 5-1, afforded a recommendation of approval to the city council. No one from the public spoke in opposition to this request. We do, staff does find the PAD amendment, the height increase and rezone is consistent with the general plan, is compatible with the surrounding area. As such, we are recommending approval subject to the stipulations in the attached ordinance. With that, Mayor, staff's available for questions. The applicant is also here for any questions.
Thank you. All right, so are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay, would any of the ordinance like to speak? And I'm going to close this public hearing. Will the city clerk please read Resolution 2018-1878 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1878 declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the city clerk entitled official supplementary zoning map number 18-03A. Legal description for rezoning PV 303 West 3. Legal description PV 303 Planned Area Development and PV 303 Pad Development Parameters and Uses, June 2018.
Thank you. Could I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Hampton, and a second by Councilman Laura Tonno. Open for council discussion? No discussion? Okay. Oh, Councilman Pizzillo.
Just real quick, that 5-1, what was the concern of the one? Do you remember?
Mayor, councilmembers, the questioning from the commission member was what could go to 130 feet? She was looking for a picture or what could go. I don't know if that was the reasoning behind it. She was looking for more specifics. Unfortunately, we don't have a user or something that we could provide her something specific at the time, so.
No, I assume, and again, I don't want to assume, you know what that does, but when they come, when the plans actually come in, from a static standpoint, you'll have some say, what does go in at 130 feet?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay. I'm fine.
No other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tonno?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, will the city clerk please read ordinance 2018-1391 by title only?
Adopt ordinance Number 2018-1391, rezoning a portion of the PV 303 Planned Area Development by conditionally rezoning approximately 11 acres from commercial C2 to industrial I1, and increasing the maximum building height within an approximately 310-acre portion of PV 303 West 3, from 75 feet to 130 feet within the industrial I1 land use. Amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Could I please have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Council Stip, and a second from Council Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. Councilman Stip.
Should have done this with the first one. Steve, I just wanted to thank you for the thoroughness and the description of your presentation. It was great detail, so thank you for making it simple. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Laura Tonno?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Seven point three, on business, is a public hearing, consider a request for the use permit for a swimming pool to be located in the front yard of a residence at 9697 Santo Tomas Drive. Public hearing open. Joe Schmidt? Oh, Joe, we have Christopher here. All right, Christopher and Joe.
Yes, ma'am.
Man of the duel tonight. All right, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Before Joe presents the actual case, I just wanted to indulge you, if you'll give me a moment, to introduce it, if I may.
You may.
As you know, the development continuum has been on a three-year journey to really deliberately and very consciously improve not only our processes, but our customer service. And we're very proud of what we have accomplished in that realm, but tonight I'm here because we frankly made a mistake. We did not provide good customer service to the Herman family, and I'd like to apologize to them for this particular error that was made. Back in January of 2018, we received a permit for a pool in a, in the front yard. The zoning ordinance allows for pools to be constructed in the front yard with a use permit. The permit application was approved, reviewed, and approved out of sequence. It should not have been issued back in January before going through this particular process. So when we learned of it in May, I believe it was, we went and visited with the Herman family at their home, issued a stop work order, and then began this process. So I know it has caused them some angst, and frankly, we, staff is embarrassed as well about the error, the human error that took place with this, and we'd just like to acknowledge it, apologize, and go through this process as appropriate. Well, with that regard, if you'd like to know what we have done in order to prevent this type of error from happening again, Rebecca can certainly address that, and if you don't have those questions, we'll just turn it over to Mr. Schmitz.
Is anyone in this council, like, that addressed? No, are you fine? Okay.
Yeah, I could hear.
They would like to hear it addressed. So Rebecca, you have the microphone?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor and council, and also thank you for that introduction, Christopher. The pool that was submitted is part of a permit by email, which comes over the front counter, is in, and is reviewed in 24 to 48 hours. And we have a checklist of the items that we go through, and one of the items that we neglected to say is evaluate where the pool is located, and ultimately, this just came down to us kind of rushing through the process and not truly sitting down and looking at that the pool was in the front yard, and reaching out to our teammates in planning to see what we needed to do. But we have developed a new checklist so that this will not happen again in the future.
Councilman Pizzillo?
No, I would just, also, I'd like to say, is I really do appreciate bringing forward when there's an issue, and that you address it. Clear transparency, I like, and I really thank you for bringing that forward. And it's not always easy, but we're all human, which means our time is when we won't make mistakes. But the fact you brought it to us, addressed it, to make sure it's not going to happen again, I, I thank you for that.
Any other comments? I have to agree with Councilman Pizzillo. It's very bold of you, and very good to come forth and disclose this, and I think that's probably very, the applicant probably is very happy about your honesty and helping them through this, so thank you very much. All right, do we now get Joe? All right, Joe, you have the floor. Joe Schmidt, Long Range Planner, presenting.
Rebecca's taller than I am. May I have Elmo, please? We'll go old school tonight. Okay, so with that introduction, part of my presentation's been taken care of, but the property that's under consideration tonight is at 9697 Santo Tomas Drive. It's in the subdivision that is known as Estrella Parcel 9, and it is situated right here on the aerial photograph. As Christopher indicated, the property owner submitted for an application for a swimming pool, and the swimming pool was going to be located at the front of the house, which is on a cul-de-sac. And then we learned that the requirement for a use permit had not been satisfied before issuing the permit, so the work was stopped and this process was initiated. The pool itself will be set back about 26 feet from the front property line, so there's quite a bit of room at the front of the house. The house itself is set back about 45 feet, so there is an area between the house and the street that can accommodate the proposed swimming pool. The standards for reviewing a use permit is that the proposed use should not be detrimental to persons residing or working in the vicinity, or the, to the neighborhood or the public welfare, and that the proposed use is reasonably compatible with uses allowed in the surrounding area. I neglected to cover this rendering of the swimming pool, so you can kind of see where it would be located, at the front of the house. They have two retaining walls here that support the pool, and so that the pool can be at, at the same grade as the existing patio area that's in the front of the home. Back to the criteria for reviewing a use permit, staff believes that the proposed use will not be detrimental to the surrounding area. Portion of the lot where the pool is to be located is large enough to accommodate the pool. The pool has been designed to be minimally intrusive, and will look at, as, like, part of the front patio. It'll be at the same elevation as the house, which is generally above all the adjacent lots. Be located in the same area where a partially-covered patio could be located and, and constructed with a knee wall along the south edge. The proposed colors and materials are compatible with the house and consistent with what is found in the adjacent area. As far, as far as the use being reasonably compatible with uses allowed in the surrounding area, we find that a swimming pool is a common accessory use in a residential area, and that noise is not a usual consideration when a pool is placed in the rear yard or side yard, and should not present an issue at this location. Since the pool will be set back from the street, it'll be less noticeable than if it had a solid wall or barrier on its north edge, and the retaining walls will provide a sufficient barrier to comply with safety standards. This matter was considered at a public hearing held by the Planning and Zoning Commission on June 13th, for which all the public notice requirements had been met. Three people who reside in the same area appeared and spoke in favor of the request. One written protest has been received from the owner of the lot immediately to the east, which is lot 29. This lot here. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission voted to recommend approval of the use permit by a vote of five to one with one member absent. With that, that concludes my remarks and reminds you that the staff has recommended approval, subject to the stipulations that are noted in your agenda material.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor.
All right.
Raffaela Gilmore? Do you want to come speak?
All right, as you come forward, each speaker is limited to three. I'm going to wait till she comes up. She's at the back. So before you start, please name, say your name and your address, and you have three minutes, limited to three minutes to speak. You have a little light there, the yellow light will, you have a yellow light and a buzzer that'll let you know you have thirty seconds left to speak. Before you begin, please state your name and address.
Okay, my name is Raffaela Gilmore. I'm a neighbor in one six four seven four West San Pedro Circle, and I still think that it will, it's a nice project. That's all. I like it.
That's very kind of you to come forward. Thank you very much. All right, any other?
Yes, Mayor, Stephen Roan?
And I think you heard the directions before?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and thank you, council members. My name is Stephen Roan, and I reside at eight nine four four San Angelo Street, and I am a neighbor. And I just want to also recommend that the project is approved. I think it'll bring much-needed value to the neighborhood. It's a wonderful-looking project, and those are special homes and special land up there, special lots. And I think this will make that one area, again, the special area that it needs to be in that area.
Thank you very much. Going forth. Any other speakers?
Yes, Mayor. Catherine Roan?
Be sure to say your name and address, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Catherine Roan, it's okay.
Okay.
Eight nine four four San Angelo Street, Goodyear, Arizona. Also a resident of that area, adjacent to the Summit Neighborhood. Think it's a wonderful use of that land. I think what you're not all seeing here is the elevation change, and this is really the best outcome for that particular parcel. As the previous speaker indicated, these are custom home lots. They don't fit in with a cookie cutter approach, and I think they've done a wonderful job to utilize the land in a very wonderful way. So we'd like to consider, ask you to consider voting yes for this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other?
Yes, Susan Schmelzer?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Susan Schmelzer. I live at nine seven three five South San Marcos Drive West. And if you recall what the map looked like of the community, my home is one of the closest homes to the Herman residence. And, you know, I do feel that their pool, and I don't like to highlight pool because the retaining wall is there to hide the pool. It will add character to the area. As many of the speakers have spoken already, these are custom home lots, and we like there to be uniqueness to the properties. That's the reason why people move into custom homes, to have a unique home. And as the speaker before me just mentioned, the homes at the upper roads of this community are very steep. So retaining walls do add character. It makes their property look much more beautiful. I even have retaining walls on my home, which I think have improved the look of the community as well. I'd like to mention that since the Herman Pool Residence did start construction, I am aware of three properties that were sold or are currently in escrow, that the purchasers are planning to build. They have plans, they have all intentions of building. So people aren't running away, they're coming. Economics one-on-one, supply and demand. You know, we feel the residents of that community that the property values will go up, the demand will improve to come into those developments, and it'll only help the area. So I do certainly recommend that it be approved.
Thank you for your presentation. Any other?
Yes, Mayor, Stephen Ruth?
Evening, Mayor.
Evening.
I'd just like to add our support.
Just say your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Stephen Ruth, eighty-seven seventy-five Santa Elizabeth Drive, neighborhood. Just like to add our support. We think it's a great project and ought to go through as quickly as possible.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Any other?
Patricia Ruth?
Patricia Ruth, eight seven seven five South Santa Elizabeth, and I'm a neighbor. I think we all agree it's a great idea.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much for coming forth. Any other?
Yes, Mayor, the applicant is also here to speak. I don't have the applicant's name.
Did she?
Sorry?
A card?
We'll get one before she leaves.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this evening. My name is Amy Herman. I'm the owner and resident at ninety-six ninety-seven Santo Tomas Drive in Goodyear, Arizona, eight five three three eight. I am the mother of these two beautiful children here beside me and my husband Eric. My husband Eric and I are proud to be a part of the city of Goodyear and Australia Mountain Ranch Community. We would like tonight to assure City Council and Mayor that we seek to work together in partnership to enhance the beauty of our home, the beauty of our neighborhood and our community. We humbly request that the special use permit be granted at the Herman Residence Pool for the following reasons. Sorry, this is my first time.
It always happens. Do not worry about that.
First, the proposed Herman Residence Pool is not intrusive to the rights of our neighbors or our community. Before obtaining city permits, we went through a rigorous design review process with our HOA. Approval was obtained through the HOA based off the design plan that maximizes the best of the hillside views. While maintaining the landscaping standards of the area, secluded between two retaining walls, the custom pool has been designed to stay hidden from sight. Furthermore, the pool faces north and away from the adjacent lots. So it's important because the pool, there's not going to be a home that's directly in front of the pool. Second, only one conditional objection was received requesting a noise barrier and specific setback from the apex of the courtyard. The location of the pool itself was not being objected to. It is our understanding that the city of Goodyear does not currently regulate noise from pools, as evidenced by a multitude of homes with view fences. We believe that this objection is not material based off the recommendations of the zoning commission and ordinances. Last but not least, part of what makes life in Australia really special is a strong sense of community and togetherness. We are thankful this evening to be blessed with the support of our neighbors and friends that live within Parcels eight and nine, who have taken time out of their busy days and schedules to voice their support of our project. I do feel that some of the pictures that have been tonight don't show quite the elevation, so if you're interested, I did bring a few extras. And I'd like to thank you again for your time, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the entire family that come up. It's nice to see you.
So I think that's all, unless you have any questions?
I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
I think we want to take over from here.
Okay.
Unless there's more cards. Is there anything? Okay, so I'm going to close the hearing. And can I have a motion, a second, to approve the use permit for a swimming pool to be located in the front yard of the residence at ninety-six ninety-seven Santo Tomas Drive on lot thirty-one of Estrella Parcel Nine in the Estrella Phase One Planned Area Development. Do I hear a motion? No moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Loretano and a second by Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion. Councilman Loretano?
Well, thank you, everybody, for coming, and thank you for the city staff and everybody for saying, hey, we kind of messed up on this one, let's try to fix it. I think that's how government works best together. I live up in Estrella, and I just asked the mayor to make sure, because I drove by this house to make sure I had the right house, that this is Frank Cavalier's old house, who used to be on the city council. So I, we, a lot of us have been in that house, and we're familiar with the elevations and and when we first moved to Australia, just so people know, my husband sold some of the custom lots up there. So they all have building envelopes. This is within the building envelope. This is a beautiful project. I, you know, I can't wait to see when it's done. I might be knocking on your door to check it out because it is absolutely gorgeous, and I think we're all going to be on the same page here. When you have these rocky hillside lots, you got to be creative. And sometimes it's in the front, sometimes it's going to be in the side, sometimes it's going to be in the back. And I think we need to always make sure flexibility, flexibility, so it's going to change the look of that house, and I think it's going to be gorgeous, so I'm all for it.
Thank you. Councilman Stip?
Rare, excuse me, rarely are, do we get no-brainer decisions up here, but this one is really a no-brainer. I think the Herman family obviously is going to throw a big pool party when this thing is done for the neighbors. But I also want to thank the neighbors for coming out. Oftentimes, we get challenges and concerns about things that are going on in various neighborhoods, and people will send an email, and then they'll stay at home. The best way for us to know that we're doing the right thing by you is to hear from you directly. So thank you very much for coming down and letting us know how you feel about it. And to the Herman family, enjoy your pool.
Well, I guess, yes.
Yeah, I was gonna.
I won't let you go there.
I think to hit a lot of the points, I was going to say to you, but yeah, I think it's a good use for that area. Actually, when I was at high school, I did concrete for the driveway in that house, so. So, yeah, with my dad, so small world. But, yeah, I think it's a good, a good use of that, that space there, and addressed all the safety concerns, things I had as well, so, so thank you.
Well, I drove up there today, and from a distance, I could see it, because I've been to that house so many times, I can't tell you. I mean, I knew that house, the entire house, many parties, many great dinner parties there, and, and it is on a slope. I saw the picture before I drove up there, the staff, and I was impressed by the design, but even more so by your partial wall was up when I was there, and it was really exciting. I was tempted to go knock on your door, just to go in to see what it looked like from the other side, because I sat at a dining room table, kind of in that area that looks out. And it really is a wonderful architectural addition to that home. So I think we're all very excited, and it's really nice to know you have such a great neighborhood, but take the time, it come out at six forty-four and wait for this meeting to come up and talk about your, your project. So that kind of tells you what Goodyear is about. We're kind of a family. We're growing, but we're still close, so I appreciate it. And anytime you want to send us a invitation, we'll all come up and look at it when it's finished. Won't bring my bathing suit, but I will come up and look. All right, I think we're all done for discussion, so roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Great, thank you very much. Oh, well, all right, you can clap your hands if you want to. All right, the next item is seven point four on business to consider approving the allocations for the fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen, community funding. Christina Plant, Neighborhood Services Coordinator, will be presenting. Christina?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I am here tonight to bring forward the community funding subcommittee recommendations for fiscal year nineteen. Briefly, for people who are in the audience or tuning in, the community funding is a grant opportunity for nonprofit organizations, serving our Goodyear residents in the areas of human and social services, and it's been in existence since about two thousand and one. The annual reports for the people who are funded in last fiscal year won't be out until the middle of next month, and I'll share a full summary with council at that time. But just for the benefit of the public as well, some examples in the first six months is that over seven thousand Goodyear residents benefited from services provided by funded agencies in the fiscal year we're currently in. For example, Helping Families in Need helped three hundred and forty-two Goodyear residents with enrollment benefit, benefit enrollment assistance. Northwest Valley Connect provided a hundred and seventeen trips and fielded a hundred calls inquiring about transportation assistance. Seventy-five victims of domestic violence found shelter through our funded partners, New Life Center and Sojourner. And more than five thousand Goodyear residents were provided with food security through Agua Fria Food and Clothing Bank, All Faith Community Services, and Saint Mary's. And then finally, a last example, Southwest Lending Closet loaned durable medical equipment to over a thousand Goodyear residents. So the process for this year, the application opened on April twenty-fifth, and they were due on May thirteenth. We did a press release posted on the website and an email blast about the available application. And then a subcommittee evaluates the applications and have a hundred and fourteen thousand four hundred dollars available to allocate. We received thirty-four applications, four of them were first-time applicants, requesting a combined total of two hundred and fifty-five thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. There are a variety of health and human services providers, including churches, shelters, et cetera. Twenty-six applications are being advanced for funding. I would like to thank Mayor Lord, Vice Mayor Campbell, and Councilmember Pazillo for their time and attention in reviewing the application and the careful thought they put into making the recommendations. So those recommendations are a New Leaf Family Stability Program at five thousand dollars, Agua Fria Food and Clothing Bank at twelve thousand dollars, All Faith Community Services, twelve thousand dollars, Area Agency on Aging, fifty-three hundred dollars, Benavia, fifteen hundred dollars, Big Brothers Big Sisters, three thousand dollars, Boys and Girls Club, five thousand dollars, Catitude, a thousand dollars, CAS, eleven thousand dollars, Child Help, ten thousand dollars, Community Information and Referral, two-one-one, three thousand dollars, Free Arts for Abused Children, fifteen hundred dollars, Goodyear Lions Club, two thousand dollars, Helping Families in Need, thirty-five hundred dollars, Homeless Youth Connections, fifteen hundred dollars, Junior Achievement of Arizona, four thousand dollars, Lutheran Social Services of the Southwest, the I Help Program, twenty-one hundred dollars, Mission of Mercy, fifteen hundred dollars, New Life Center, eight thousand dollars, Northwest Valley Connect, two thousand dollars, Sky Kids, one thousand dollars, the Sojourner Center, fifteen hundred dollars, Southwest Lending Closet, ten thousand dollars, Southwest Literacy Association, one thousand dollars, Saint Mary's Food Bank, five thousand dollars, and finally, West Valley Youth Orchestra, one thousand dollars. So tonight, I look to the council to approve the recommended allocations for fiscal year nineteen, community funding.
Thank you very much, Christina. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? And can I have a motion, a second, to approve the recommended allocations for the fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen, community funding? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Heard a motion from Councilman Hampton and a second from Councilman Pazillo. Open for discussion. Councilman Pazillo?
You know, it's really a tough decision for the amount of money that we have to divvy up, and there's a lot of good organizations out of there that do a lot of good work. Got the opportunity to personally go through a tour of CAS not that long ago, and I tell you, if you can just see the needs that's going out there in the community of people, anything in my view that we can do a little bit, it is to help, I think is very important because we're all in this together. And what I would like to do, and I know we're going to be discussing it at a future date, is in a city- is in a city that has this budget size we have, and just speaking for myself, I would like to see a little more to help those out that really need our help. And again, keep in mind, these all people contribute to our organization, and I'm a firm believer in human capital, invest in it now upfront, it's going to pay dividends long-term. So again, tough decisions, but this is the best we could do with the money we have.
Thank you, Joe. Any other comments? All right, let's vote on this. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Christina. We'll go to 7.5 on business to consider adopting ordinance number 2018-11376 to set the property tax levy for the fiscal year 2018-2019. And Lori's back, Wigan Roth Finance Manager Budget and Research to present.
All righty, thank you. This will go a little quicker than the work session presentation. Just essentially, here on the last step of adopting the budget, I'll remind you that two weeks ago, you adopted a $447.4 million budget. It assumed that the property tax revenues we're talking about today would be levied. It's just the way the state law is set up, that you have to adopt the budget before you adopt the property tax. So just to let you know what these property taxes pay for, the secondary property tax pays for debt service on general obligation bond-funded projects, and that's $5.8 million being levied. The primary property tax pays for, it's a general fund revenue, so it pays for the day-to-day operations of operations, such as police, fire, parks, and general services. The rest of these slides, you've seen as we've gone through the year. Again, the property tax, the combined rate is going from $1.73, or $1.7349 to $1.7350, so about $173,000 on a $100,000 home. Kind of give you an idea of what's been going on with our property tax rates. Historically, they were up at $1.90 in FY14. And through some, through assessed valuation growth, we've been able to drop the property tax rate. And then in addition, you have also authorized the use of additional bond, a geo-bond-funded projects, which are incorporated into these property tax numbers. The historical levies, we are still below that peak levy, that combined peak levy of 2010. I would guess that by next year, perhaps, we'll finally surpass that highest levy. And then in terms of what you, one of the things you voted on two weeks ago was the truth in taxation increase that's associated with the primary property tax. And essentially, on this slide, in that middle column, near the bottom, you see $177,625. That represents the 2% growth that we're allowed to have in our primary property tax each year by state law. And that's also a council-adopted policy that we would grow that 2% each year. With that, I'd answer any questions and recommend that you approve the ordinance for the property tax levy.
Thank you, Lori. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, will the city clerk please read ordinance number 2018-1376 by title only?
Adopt ordinance number 2018-1376, levying upon the assessed valuation of the property within the city of Goodyear, subject to primary and secondary taxation, a certain sum upon each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amounts estimated to be required in the annual budget for the purpose of paying for various expenses to raise the amount estimated to be received from other sources of revenues, providing funds for various bond redemptions for the purpose of paying principal and interest upon bonded indebtedness, all for fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2019.
Thank you. Could I have a motion in a second?
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Pizzillo and a second from Councilman Hampton. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pizzillo?
Could you go back to the slide with the bar graph real quick? Hold it, yeah, right there. The only reason why I want to go back to that is when you look at the height in fiscal year 10 to what it is now, and we're not there, that's nine years, that doesn't take into consideration the growth over those last almost 10 years of new assessed valuation that has come on board. So if you take that into consideration, we're still, I think, well below what we were collecting nine, 10 years ago. So just want to just kind of highlight that, because I think that's an important thing when you look at what the city's done as a result of the Big Dip and the recession. We're still not there, even with the growth that we were back in 10. So, thank you.
Councilman Pizzillo, thank you for bringing that forth. Councilman Stip?
You know, we, it's obviously no secret, I haven't supported the budget this year. But as a council, we did approve a budget. In order to fund that budget, we have to vote on the property tax levy. We made a commitment to one another, and obviously, with our commitment with the manager is that we would support the council actions. So if the rest of the council votes on approving a budget, even though I disagree with it, I have now a commitment and an obligation to the rest of the council that I vote in support of this. And those things can often seem contradictory to one another. But in keeping my word to the council, I'm going to support the property tax levy. I am thankful, Lori, I think you go back one more slide? Nope, one more. The one that had the rates in it from 14.
That's the rates.
Well, that is the one. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Down to the bottom.
Yeah, I got to get my screen out of the way. I am very thankful that, and I know we can make this conversation go a whole nother hour, talk about rate versus levy, but we have been, as you can tell, slowly reducing the rate from its peak. And I think its peak, what I want to say, was in 13 at 196.
I'm sorry, I don't have that information, but I believe it has been above $1.90.
Yeah, it was above $1.90. So I think we can be very proud of the fact that, no matter what we've done and whether I personally have agreed with the budgets or not, we have been able to take these tax rates and continue to lower them. And particularly this year, that we're able to keep it low and make some significant community investments. So I just thought it was important to talk about that.
Thank you. Any other comments? I just wanted one comment, Lori. Thank you for your presentations. Thank you for all your work. It's, as I told you, you do a very good job at this. Understandable. You answer our questions each time, so I'm really grateful. All right, council, let's roll call vote.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tonno?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right. You can go home now and have a cup of coffee. Oh, I forgot, that's right. Thank you for reminding me. No, you can't go home. All right, the next item is 7.6 on business to consider appointing a new council member. And Darcy McCracken, city clerk, will be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the time for the City Council to appoint a new council member to complete the term of office for the vacancy recognized on June 11th. The process included advertising for the position, accepting applications, a review of those applications, and interviews with the selected applicants. The new member will be sworn in on July 2nd and take their seat on the dais at that time. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor.
All right. Joanne Osborne?
Please come forward and state your name and address.
You thought you got rid of me. Well, it's kind of interesting being on this side. I'm Joanne Osborne, 13523 West Montevista. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to thank you all, but mostly, I wanted to thank the applicants that stepped up and wanted to be part of our city and taking my place. It means a great deal to me. It means a lot to me that we have citizens that really want to make a difference. And I'm very thankful for that. I don't know who you've picked, and I shouldn't know, and that's good. But you know what? Each and every person that has applied, I know, has very special and unique talents, and I'm glad that they stepped up. Thank you.
Well, thank you. All right. Any other?
No, Mayor.
All right, so I'm going to need a motion. And so, Councilman Pizzillo, will you give us a motion, please?
I move that we appoint Laura Kano to the position.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Pizzillo and a second by Councilman Laura Tonno. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pizzillo?
First, I want to say, we had some really great candidates. It was a tough decision. But unfortunately, we only have one to fill. And as a result of that, you know, we just, that's who we had picked. But all of you were very, very good candidates, and I think any of you could have done it. But unfortunately, with one to pick, that's what it kind of came down to. So again, I thank you all for applying. I'm sure we'll see you all in the future. And again, would appreciate continuing working here in the city, whether on committees or whatever your future even politics may be, to please continue, because you're an excellent source for the city of Goodyear and would like for you to continue doing that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, I mean, he had a lot of it, but yeah, I think we're truly blessed as a city that we have such high caliber candidates come and apply to us. They've made it a hard decision on our end to pick a person. I mean, I said, very great candidates, so I look forward to working with them in the future. They'll be, I know that they're all fans and they're all, they all love the city. So I'm sure we'll see them on more councils and more committees and things like that. So I just want to thank you to all the candidates that applied and taken out the time to come interview with us and look forward and to still work with you in the future. So thank you.
Councilmember Laura Tonno?
Yeah, I want to echo that as well. Thank you for everyone that applied and took the time to step up. And what former councilmember Osborne said, you know, it's really hard sometimes to put yourself out there. So I want to thank you and all your service to the city. Everyone that applied has been vital to the city, and please, please, stay involved. It's great to have you, and you're all such wonderful people. And it was really hard, and you guys are all, all so talented, that we are so blessed that you're part of our city.
Yes, and finally, first of all, thank you very much, Councilman Laura Tonno. No, that's Laura Tonno. I can't call you a councilperson anymore, but does that always stay with? But Osborne, it's nice to join that you came up tonight and showed your appreciation for it. We have some really talented people, and absolutely fantastic resumes came before us. And each of these people have really special talents. And when you do something like this, you just only hope, finally, with the person that's chosen, the other people that were not, that you're not going to stop pursuing what you came before us, because you are great value to our city. And there is going to be, in the future, opportunity for council, for committees, for different things. And so we would like to have you continue your commitment, and we thank you very much. It's not an easy process in which to come before and talk about yourself. So, but you all did a good job, but we did choose this person because we felt Laura has spent a great deal of time in the city of Goodyear. And bringing you on the council, it was very easy to do because of your experience and all the committees and things you've been involved with our city. So there will be a time, just remind me, before I can talk, before we vote on this, the date when all of this, could you just go ahead and?
On July 2nd, will the, Ms. Kano will then be sworn in to the council, and will actually take her position on the dais at that point.
We wanted to give you the opportunity at a later date, so you could have your friends and your relatives come and have a celebration. So in order to make that happen, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tonno?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much. All right, combinations or reports or anything on our activities that you've had this week? Yes, Councilman Stip?
We had the Valley Metro Board of Directors meeting last week. May have heard about the decision of the city of Phoenix to reexamine their light rail down Central Avenue. We thought that might have some bearing on Valley Metro going forward. It appears as though it will not, at least in the short term. And it made a very interesting meeting, having to set the agenda out 24 hours ahead and the meeting the night before our meeting, so it left for some angst. But we also approved the budget for the next coming year. So we're moving forward straight ahead with that.
Thank you. Any other? Well, I'm just going to mention a few. Mountain Park Health Center, St. Mary's Food Distribution was this week, the parking lot next to our parking lot, where they were giving food, fresh fruit, vegetables to anybody that wanted to collect it. Didn't matter if you were in need or not in need. And so they were very happy to be there, and I thank them very much for that, because at 8 o'clock, they had a lot of people in line for that. The other thing, I want to thank Guileen for the artwork that was produced in the last display at their library. Awakening Our Creativity was the name of it. And they had individuals, all age groups, that created artwork. And they made it very personal to their life, so they had to use their experiences and produce something. And it was very, very nice. And the people were, the citizens were quite emotional. I talked to a couple of them, and it brought out a lot of memories of their lives and things they had done and people they had met and situations. So it was very, very creative. So I thank you very much. I also went to the world's largest swim lesson, where the swimming's taking place all over the United States at the same time. That was just a great and wonderful seeing the children do that. And then I just wanted to say that we greeted General Canterbury as the commander of the Luke Air Force Base. And on the side of that was a wonderful celebration for those that were there. He did come up and visit us personally at the city hall, meet the city manager and staff, which was very nice. And the story behind this is that General Canterbury, I've known since he was six years old. My daughter has babysat him, so we have lots of secrets about him, and I swore I would not divulge any of them. But his family lives in Litchfield Park, and his father also was a commander at Luke Air Force Base. So his son is now that, and they were both Thunderbirds. So I think that's the first time for those two positions, father and son. So we're very pleased that they're going to be in our area. So that's all I wanted to let you know on that. So does the city manager have anything to report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Just a few items. Last week, the Goodyear Fire Department hosted their fourth annual Camp Fires, which stands for Females in Rescue and Emergency Services for 17 young women ages 14 to 18. The overall goal of the camp is to offer these young women the opportunity to be leaders, to be independent thinkers, and most importantly, to build their confidence. They learned about firefighter duties and qualities, fire service history, pushing past limits, encouraging each other, working as a team, the importance of physical fitness and nutrition, and also received their CPR certification. They had various women in different leadership positions come and speak to them, and I had the opportunity to not only witness them finish climbing the really tall ladders on the trucks, but to engage in conversation with them, and they were truly brave and impressive young women. Overall, the camp was a huge success and culminated with a graduation ceremony last Friday evening. A special thank you to our fire department for taking the time to host this camp each year, and I'm sure the impact on each one of the participants will be long-lasting and something they will never forget. Also, just wanted to follow up on the world's largest swim lesson that the mayor mentioned. So last Thursday, June 21st, Goodyear participated in the ninth annual World's Largest Swimming Lesson. This event serves as a platform to help build awareness about the fundamental importance of teaching children to swim to prevent drowning, which remains the second-leading cause of accidental death for children 1 through 14. Worldwide participation was expected to be more than 45,000 at over 700 locations in 29 countries, six continents, and 44 U.S. states. Goodyear had over 75 attend, including 35 youth participating in an actual swim lesson. The swim lessons, by the way, at Goodyear Pool will run through June 27th. Thank you.
That's wonderful. Does council have any inquiries of staff? I don't think so at this point, right? Okay. Anything for the future agenda items, if you do. We're almost finished before the break. So the next meeting will be a special meeting on July 2nd, 2018, at 5:00, followed by a work session at 5:30 p.m. and a regular meeting at 6:00. And just so the audience will know, council break will become... And just so you, the audience will know, council break will become, begin July 10th and end August 19th. So before I adjourn this meeting, we know we're going to go into finishing up our work session. And just, do you require, we can call the meeting, give you a break, or are you all right to go in? All right, so since there's no, pardon? You want a break? Okay, we'll take a short break after. I'll call a meeting to order and then we'll take a short break. All right? So no further business discussed, this meeting is adjourned. And now I will reconvene the work session. And so we're gonna take a little bit of break, okay? How about 10 minutes before we go on? All right, 10-minute break. Pardon? Yeah, we're gonna stay up here. Let's not, let's not.